Curry County Board of Commissioners, we-
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Commissioner Boyce, do you have a line of duty? It is there, yes. All right, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
I have two. The assessor would like his item, which is the CAFSA grant. That that order was amended and staff got it to you this morning, just so you could see those changes.
Yeah, I saw that. Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hey, there were eight sections of previous meeting minutes to review. I got through two of them. Some of us were here until like seven o'clock last night, council huddle. I'd like to ask the board if we could just review the first two today, pull the rest of them out and just table them. Great work, Staff Jesuit, but I didn't have time to go through all eight at one meeting with all that we're dealing with. So at the pleasure of the board, I would appreciate that consideration.
So you'd like to remove C through H and move them to the next meeting?
Yes, Chair Pash, if we could. And then on 6B, I have one comment there that we could discuss later or do it now.
Why don't we do it now?
Okay, 6B regarding the Oasis Park for the city of Brookings. It, I made it pretty clear that I thought we should just, we had, I had some opposition. We should just give it to the city of Brookings with the amount of work they've put into that. And that did not pass the board. And I just wanted the people to know that I thought that, that reminding, that is my position, still is. And for, it should be included in the minutes, Mr. Chair. That would be the only correction I would make.
Well, did you vote against it?
I wanted in the minutes, sir, to have my, my position be clearly stated that I was in favor of deeding it to the city of Brookings.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything further?
No.
So we need a motion on that.
Council Huddle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For executive session, if you could add 1926602D, and this would be labor negotiations.
6602D. All right. Have a motion, please.
I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Mr. Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, so we're gonna move, um, line F up to A, CAFSA grant 2001, or 2020-21. Assessor Colan?
You're up.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Colan, Curry County Assessor, thank you for moving this agenda item up. I know you've got a busy schedule today. Each year, departments comprising assessment in tax collection, distribution being the treasurer's office, and the Board of Property Tax Appeals compile an application, which has been known since the 90s as the County Assessment Function Funding Assistance Grant, the CAFSA grant. Incidentally, just, just a couple small statistics. Chair Pash, this is to be the second time you've, you've acted on this grant. Commissioners Golden Boyce, this will be the fourth year you've acted on this grant. It'll be my 28th year bringing this, this grant before the Board of Commissioners. The grant application must be prepared and approved so it can be submitted to the Oregon Department of Revenue by May 1st. The application has been prepared and approved into use since Friday. In, in recent years, the CAFSA grant has returned approximately 18% of county's budgeted expenditure on assessment and taxation to the counties. With regard to the grant itself, you've got this document, looks like that. On Form 8 in the back, it requires a signature from one of the commissioners. We've got you, Chair Pash, written in as, as the signature. So i- if the board would give you a signature authority, or if you prefer, I mean, certainly be acceptable to give signature authority to my liaison commissioner, Commissioner Gold. My recommendation is that you approve the CAFSA grant as submitted.
Do I have a motion?
We need to amend with a signature authority in that.
Correct.
Okay. I'll move. We approve that and with the chair's signature authority. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Mr. Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Aye.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move into, move back up to public comments. I know that that grant needed to be put in this morning, so I wanted to get it out as quickly as possible. Public comments. Number one would be Ms. Bonifus. Morning, Lynn.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, okay, I'm here to talk about COVID in general, but the transient lodging specifically as well. First of all, I want to acknowledge that there are a lot of people out there that agree with my position and a lot that disagree with my position. And I know there's a lot of fear out there about this virus. And I would just encourage everyone to look deeper. Don't take what the media says on face value. I know a lot of people do, but a lot of people don't. My first point is, when this thing all started nationally and globally, but here specifically, Governor Brown shut down a lot of businesses as, quote, "nonessential." Who is she to decide what's essential and what's nonessential? Would be my question. In my opinion, every job is essential. Because every job in this county and in this state provides a living for somebody. It, you know, it provides a living either for the proprietor or for the employee. Those people, and I've heard story after story here in this county, people have applied for unemployment, unemployment, even today have not yet gotten it, a month later. The emergency was called generally to prevent, you know, you know, just a run on our hospitals and to prevent the spread of the virus. Well, the run on the hospitals never happened, especially here in Curry County. But national, even nationally, except New York City maybe, and, and New Orleans and New Jersey, a few hotspots might have had some hospital issues, but we haven't. And in the meantime, our hospitals have been furloughing doctors and furloughing medical staff. And I don't know if everyone knows it, but Peace Health filed Chapter 11 bankruptcy, which is a very large health organization. Many hospitals, such as our, our hospital, our health system, they may or may not make it. You know, what do we do if we don't have a hospital here? What do we do if we don't have the ER? From the CDC, isolation. Isolation separates sick people with a contagious disease from people who aren't. Quarantine separates and restricts the movement of people who were exposed to a contagious disease to see if they become sick, such as what we've done with, if someone tests positive, they isolate for 14 days, okay, or quarantine. Neither says that the rest of the people have to be isolated or quarantined. And that's on the CDC website. Is it logical to either isolate or quarantine people who do not have the virus? Or even those who are not sure if they have the virus? There are high-risk groups, as we all know. The high-risk groups being people with a compromised immune system, people who have underlying medical conditions. Here in Oregon, all of our deaths, except for one, have had underlying medical conditions. So that's your high-risk group. Your high-risk group is elderly people, people with compromised immune systems, people who are in old age homes, if you want to call them that, retirement homes. And, you know, people who have already existing conditions. So why should the rest of us be punished for that, for just being alive, basically? And most of you know that isolating ourselves from the world, basically, and other people, weakens our immune system. It's just, you know, you don't have to be an M.D. to know that. We need flora, we need the viruses and bacteria and everything that's out in today's world to keep our immune systems healthy. We need to build up an immunity to this virus, and the only way that's gonna happen is to be exposed to it, one way or another. And, um, the county transit lodging. People might not know that what you do here only affects the county, not the city of Brookings, not the city of Port Orford, not the city of Gold Beach. So if you open transit lodging, it's mostly vacation rentals. I can think of one motel that might be in the, in the county. So would you rather have a whole horde of people coming in if you opened the whole thing? Or would you rather try it out with the county being open? The vacation rentals where one, one family or one couple comes, maybe, a lot less people. I'm also here to encourage all of the business owners that want to open to do so. Take control of your own financial stability and quality of life. At a very minimum, every business owner in this county that wants to open should make their voices heard to you. Commissioners, so that the Commissioners know how- And I'll leave you with this. Neither our federal or our state constitution says that our freedoms are only there as long as we don't have a virus. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will say, many business owners have voiced their concerns and wants to reopen with many of us in these offices. Sure.
Um, I'm here to encourage the Commissioner, my, my main point. I'm here to encourage the Commissioners to repeal Order 20842, which closed the transient lodging in the county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gordon, Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you. Ms. Bonifus, we don't always agree on everything, but you're a very well-engaged citizen. Thank you very much.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Gordon Clay, Chair of the Curry County Suicide Awareness and Prevention Council. For the purpose of today's presentation is to give you an update on where the council stands today. Fifteen highly qualified Curry County citizens joined the council along with Court Boyce, our board liaison. We had our first meeting February 5th to begin organizing. Then the pandemic happened. We quickly learned that in, in the past crisis of the Great Recession of 2007, the loss of jobs, sinking home values, and stock market freefall led to the significant rise in suicides. There's a massive scientific research that shows that the labor force status is a strong predictor of suicide deaths. With the stock market losing over 30% of its value and over 4.6 million Americans unemployed, it's plausible that more people will die by suicide, drug overdose, or alcoholism than this COVID-19 itself. So a quick campaign was put together to promote March as Self-Harm Awareness Month. A proclamation was prepared and sent to the school districts, city, and county governments, plus county radio stations and newspapers. When the proclamation was received in person, it gave the council an opportunity to shed additional light on the fact that boys self-harm as much as girls do self-harm and suicide. On April 23rd, Fortune Magazine reported that the real unemployment rate had soared past 20%, meaning that in the past five weeks, a staggering 26 million workers have already filed jobless claims. At the highest levels of unemployment following this 2007 financial crisis, there were only 15 million jobless Americans. We're up almost 100% already. With that goal, with the goal to keep awareness out there, encouraging people to break the silence about talking about suicide, we put together another announcement in the newspapers, radio stations, celebrating May as Mental Health Awareness Month. In addition, we put together a program for our faith-based communities to encourage them to celebrate May 17th as Mental Health Sunday with sermons and ideas and materials. This is a call to all of us to learn the warning signs, finally, please, and check with your neighbors, friends, colleagues, and family members who have been significantly impacted by school and business closures and the directive of social distancing, which I call social isolation. Let them know you care. There, here, here's a handout that I passed around to give you a conversation about mental health, what to do and not do. And there's much more information on our easy-to-remember website, www.suicideawarenesspreventioncouncil.org. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Clay, what does your shirt say? You might be allergic to me, I'm a nut. A good kind of nut. Thank you.
Tim Wilson?
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Nice to be out back visiting with you. This is a matter of introduction. Again, my name's Tim Wilson. I'm superintendent of the Central Curry School District, and I'm also a member of the Suicide Awareness and Prevention Council. And it's in those two roles that I speak with you this morning. May is Mental Health Awareness Month. With schools closed through June, we fully recognize the added stress caused by adding schoolwork to a parent's already full day. Just like the grownups in their homes, we also know that our students are likely experiencing some big emotional swings during this isolated time away from their teachers and friends at school. The foundation of Distance Learning for All, which is Oregon's current education plan, is to continue to focus on student belonging, care, connection, well-being, and mental and social emotional health. Besides checking in on academic progress, each teacher in our county are asking students and their families if they are feeling okay and if they need assistance. We know that our challenges to meet their needs will have to be adjusted as we prepare our classrooms in a new, normal learning environment whenever that occurs. During my 40 years as an educator, I have worked with literally thousands of students as a teacher, counselor, and administrator. And reflecting back, I don't think I would want to relive school again. Once was enough. But there are certainly some common stressors we all shared while growing up that are still present today. But the pandemic has added two key stressors that our students and their families are currently addressed with. One is anxiety around, once, not only around the pandemic, but also the impact on themselves as a family. And in their social isolation, there are more concerns about self-harm, sexual assaults, and body image issues. The second main stressor during this pandemic is the care for the essential workers. About 37% of families are impacted by having an essential worker in the workforce, whether that's as first responders, working in our stores, or serving in those capacities. As a county, you have already recognized the importance and significance of a strong mental health services program. As we continue to deal with this unknown after-effects of the COVID crisis, I am confident that we, as a community, will reach out figuratively to help out a friend, neighbor, and hopefully a stranger. I've saved up a lot of hugs for the right and healthy time to say thank you, and I'm glad that you're okay.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Frances Von Korf?
Okay.
Good morning. If you would, pull that top microphone down and introduce yourself for the record, please.
I'm Frances Von Korf. I live in Sixes. I'd just like to start off by saying, Miranda told me on the phone that everybody was gonna be required to have masks at the meeting, and there was gonna be six feet of space. I'm also pretty surprised that the sheriff announced the decision that we're gonna open these Airbnb's and stuff in the county without any plan for how we're gonna deal with an outbreak. We all know that Curry County has a really high proportion of senior citizens. As of the last census in 2010, it was like 32.4%. We can only assume it's only gone up since then. Retirees moving here, young people moving to the cities to find work. Most people in America have at least one health condition. That's not just a small group of people. It's most of us, especially here in Curry County with a high proportion of senior citizens. So we really need to take this seriously. There's no reason to, you know, try to bring the outbreak here. I understand the need to get money flowing. But we haven't even opened up the bars and stuff for the tourists to spend money on. I just think this is really mostly gonna benefit the people who own the Airbnb's, most of whom don't even live here. And it's gonna force the housekeepers to give up their unemployment and CARES Act benefits to go back to work and do dangerous work before they're comfortable. We need to consider our medical capacity. We don't have a hospital right now with any significant capacity to treat patients with COVID complications. Our environmental health specialist assured me on the phone that some steps are being taken to change that. I would hope that those steps would be already in place and announced to the public before making an announcement that we're opening things up to tourists. Also, our food, you know, Port Orford has been short on flour, butter, potatoes, grapes, all that stuff, since this stuff started and raised. All that stuff's been out. So if we're bringing tourists here for the Airbnb's, you know, how are we gonna keep our grocery shelves stocked? You know, this, COVID's already killed more people in the Vietnam War. And even though people are doing everything to stay, most people are doing everything to stay as far away from each other as they can, it's already killed more people in two months than the flu kills in a year. The stuff about the immune system, you know, the only way you can become immune to a specific pathogen is to be exposed to it, that's true. So that's kind of contradicts our own argument that we should all be out exposing ourselves to stuff. Staying home doesn't make us less immune to COVID, you know what I mean? I guess I had a lot of stuff written here, but that's pretty much it. I mean, the most disturbing thing is that this pathogen is, to me, is that it's killing doctors and nurses, even healthy young doctors and nurses who are handling the people with this disease. That doesn't happen with the flu. That hasn't, we haven't seen that with any pathogen. Dangerous, people are dying, and a lot of people are gonna die in Curry- Everything to keep this outbreak away.
Thank you. Douglas? Von Korf?
Hi.
You'd identify yourself with that.
I'm Douglas Von Korf. I'm from Sixes, Oregon. I'm a bartender in Port Orford. I'm out of work currently. Cory just talked to you about the substantial risks of reopening transient lodging in our county. I want to highlight that not only are the risks high, the rewards of such a decision are likely to be minimal. Our state parks and recreational areas remain closed, and there is still no timeline for their reopening, even for day use. Outdoors in nature are the only real draw to tourism we have in this county, and it is all ostensibly closed. What are tourists going to have to do if they decide to come here? Our restaurants have no dine-in service and thus cannot sell alcohol, which is crucial to the profitability of most food service operations. Will tourists really patronize them significantly, or will they put further strain on our local grocery stores? In Port Orford, we have experienced shortages of staples in the past months. Shortages of toilet paper and flour are ongoing at our local grocery. Meat may become in short supply soon. I, for one, do not want folks from out of town putting more strain on these limited supplies while exponentially increasing the risk of a COVID outbreak. With the widespread restrictions and culture of quarantine, the prospects for a successful tourism season are slight. But the addition into our community of even a few people traveling from COVID hotspots dramatically increases our risk of an outbreak. And those that will come when they know we are all supposed to be staying at home, those who will flout the closures of beaches and recreational areas, are those who have already not been taking social distancing and safety regulations seriously. And those people are the most likely to be carriers of the virus. I understand the desire to be back open for business. I'm a bartender in Port Orford, and I have been out of work since they closed dine-in service in March. I also understand that the summer is a critical season for many businesses in our county, and the Board of Commissioners feels the need to reopen soon to try to save the summer. But I urge you to consider that such a limited reopening will not magically fix the global problems condemning us to economic hardship this year. It will, however, throw away all the advantages of isolation that have thankfully kept Curry County free of COVID deaths. Commissioners, ask yourselves how you would feel in August with local businesses still suffering because there was little tourism to speak of, but with local hospitals overwhelmed by a COVID outbreak brought by a careless tourist, with Curry County citizens dying without access to proper medical care? That is a very real possibility, and one the Board of Commissioners should take very seriously. The lives of your constituents are in your hands. When we do make the choice to reopen, you should be absolutely sure the benefits of your decisions are worth the tremendous risks you are taking with their lives. Now is clearly too soon.
Thank you. James?
Good morning. Hi, James Crook from Pistol River. So we have Crook Point Vacation Homes in Pistol River. It's our main business. We also do logging on the property, and that's our secondary business, both of which are shut down. And then our third business is contracting, which is shut down as well. At Crook Point, safety is our, of our guests and employees is, is our top priority. While health and safety standards and procedures are followed on a daily basis with our vacation homes, we wanted to make, make you guys aware of the extra precautions we were taking when we were open to ensure, to ensure everyone's stay is healthy. There were guidelines put in place March 15th before the county ordered closing nonessential travel in Curry County. So what we were doing, we required guests to bring all food and supplies for their stay before coming to our rural community, preventing the depletion of local food and supplies and potential exposure to residents. All homes are left vacant 24 hours before cleaning teams arrive. Our cleaning team is disinfecting all hand contact surfaces in guest areas, including armrests, tables, doors, handles, knobs, counters, railings, benches, faucets, et cetera, using an EPA-approved commercial disinfectant, Clorox Bio-Stain. It killed the old coronavirus from 2003 or 2004. They, they don't have current information on whether it kills this virus, but it's the closest thing we can find. Nitro gloves are being worn by all staff during cleanings. We are running hot bleach cycles in the washing machines between each guest stay to remove all viruses and bacteria. All linens are washed in hot water with detergent containing bleach for extra disinfecting. We're also allowing a long cycle for drying, 45-minute dry cycle. We retained our, we retained our entire staff, or retrained our entire staff in thorough and frequent handwashing, fronts, backs, wrists, between fingers with soap and water for at least 20 seconds each time. Employees have also been instructed to never come to work if they experience fever or any coronavirus symptoms. So my, my brother was a research scientist and is a medical doctor. My fiance is, was a research scientist and is a medical doctor, a surgeon. We've implemented the same plan that they implement in their hospitals. This thing isn't gonna go away. My brother's been predicting this for the last 10 years. It's a very, there's a very rapid cycle of this thing mutating. It's gonna come again. We're waking out of world travel we have. So I think this is a good thing in the sense it's a wake-up call. We get our best practices in order, and then we move on. It's gonna, it's gonna make it cycle throughout the county. It's only, we've only been trying to delay it so we don't overwhelm the hospitals. So if we implement best practices, I think we can actually financially exist. If we don't financially exist, I don't, I don't, there's a balance to it. And that's gonna be, you know, that's, you're gonna have to take that balance into consideration, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
James, please say hi to your family. Very, very good job on your guidelines there. All right, so that's it for public comment. We have no presentations this morning. Moving on to consent agenda. A business, uh, meet, excuse me. Minutes for business meeting, January 22nd, 2020. Minutes for business meeting, February 5th, 2020. Appointing Commissioner Pash- Appointing Commissioner Pash to Southwest Area Commission on Transportation Board, replacing appointed Commissioner Boyce. J to appoint members to CCD, Coos, Curry, Douglas Development Corporation Board of Directors. And K to a resolution accepting the Roadmaster's amended report requiring notice-setting hearing to vacate roads for Forest Lake Property Exchange with the state. Do I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second, Mr. Chair. Further discussion? Roll, please.
Mr. Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Aye.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Moving on to seven, A repeal order two zero eight four two, closing transient lodging. Ms. Melzer?
Okay, this spring, on effective March twenty-seventh, the board had passed an order that temporary, temporarily closed all transient lodging in the unincorporated areas of the county and any city that hadn't adopted a resolution to the effect until further notice. So the matter is on the board's agenda today to decide whether or not they want to repeal that order and open up the transient lodging in the unincorporated areas again and what that effective date would be. Just to give you a little information that we've gathered in the meantime is we did receive a letter from the three cities, and I do want to share that with you, and I believe that you have received a copy of it. If not, I do have a copy here. Basically, the mayors of the three cities are asking that we hold off a little bit, and not make it effective May first. I'm not going to go through the details of that letter because you all have received it, but it was signed by all three of the mayors. In addition, we did hear from one of the city managers who had suggested perhaps we consider a phased-in approach to the lodging. And one of the suggestions was perhaps we only open lodging up to the five counties that were part of our letter that we signed last week, petitioning the governor to reopen the rural counties, maybe implement things such as people can only stay in every other room, or some other restrictions such as cleaning and some of those ideas. Something else we do have is an example that one of the commissioners found, Commissioner Gold found this, and it was guidance for hotels, motels, and other lodging facilities. So if the board was inclined to open, they might want to implement those procedures or leave it up to the lodges themselves. I know that, I did do a little research, and some of our hotels are members of the Restaurant Lodging Association, actually quite a few of them are, and I know they do have some COVID information that they share with their lodges as well. So it's, so I don't know if we have to provide guidelines for them. It seems like some of them have it, but we do have some good information here if the board does want to implement some, and I do have copies for you if we get into that depth of conversation. The other thing was Commissioner Gold had asked about what do our existing hotels and motels and bed and breakfast think about opening, the idea of opening the transient lodging back up? So staff actually took the listserv that is paying the transient lodging tax, which is those in the unincorporated area, and asked them what they thought about it, and many of them replied. We have their notes right here. Overall, they definitely support opening the county back up effectively. They don't always indicate the date, but they do say in May. So I have that information if we want to go through that. But that is what I have as far as my staff report on that.
Mr. Gold?
I spent quite a bit of time doing some research on this very thing, and I've got a statement that I'd like to read. First of all, let's talk about motels. The only motels that are ordered to stay open are those in Curry County and Coos County, Douglas, and some motels on the, other motels on the coast. But Douglas did not be, they were not part of that, and they are still open. So I reached out to some of the motels that I usually stay in, in Salem. They were open. And the Hampton Inn, I talked about what are you doing to take care of this COVID nineteen? And they said they were spending more time sanitizing rooms and public areas, having all workers wear masks and gloves, keeping pools and hot tubs locked, and allowing one family at a time for use, and then sanitizing afterwards. They were also allowing those customers that stay more than one night to have the option for no maid service so that they could lower the, the situation of possibly getting infected. And they're sanitizing surfaces that are used often, such as elevators and so forth. Another motel that I called was closed because they just didn't have enough people coming there. But the one that I did call that I got all this information on, the Hampton Inn, they said that their rate of occupancy was fifteen percent, which is pretty low. They're barely making it. So I'm thinking that Curry County needs to have some protocols in place before opening any transient facilities to the general public. Human Health and Human Resources Bureau for Public Health has a report that gives guidance for motels and other lodging facilities, and I think Director Schmelzer alluded to that. I also called motels in Crescent City, and they are only allowing essential workers to stay there. And then I got an email from the Beachfront Inn in Harbor, and she made some suggestions for safe opening, and I thought they were worthwhile. So I'm going to go over there, those very quickly. She suggested that we rotate rooms, only run one-third of the available occupancy so that rooms are used every seventy-two hours, and staff and guests are not entering the rooms within seventy-two hours. CDC states that the virus can only survive on hard surfaces for seventy-two hours. Also, check the temperature of staff before they start work and require them to wear masks. Limit the number of people in a single room to avoid large groups from traveling together. Limit stays to one night only, so the guests are only in town for one night excluding essential workers. They will go to restaurants for breakfast and dinner, but be less likely to shop at grocery stores and impact our limited resources because they are not staying for an extended period of time. Also, explain to guests that the area is still practicing social distancing and that they can have, or make a reservation, that they must shelter in place and only use, utilize takeout or delivery options. Start slow. She suggested we start slow and on a small scale to see how it goes, and if we ease into it and we can see what we're getting into, then we can decide to open more or slow down. Even with motels closed, she indicated that tourists are coming to our beaches daily, and she knew that because they were asking to use the restroom. And this is at Best Western Inn down in Harbor that I got this information. The Institute for Health Metrics and Evaluation at the University of Washington has done a study of the United States, and it projected when there should be an easing of social distancing in the various states. In its latest report that was done on four twenty-two twenty, the institute indicated that social distancing in Oregon should be eased from May twenty-fifth to May thirty-first. I also talked to Summer, and Director Schmelzer already indicated this. She's emailed all the transient lodging facilities in the county just to ask what safety protocols they will be using when they opening, open. Another big concern that I have is testing. Curry County has done testing for approximately point five percent of our population, and the demographics, age, and underlying health problems would indicate that we are at higher risk for COVID nineteen. This percent of testing is insufficient. We need scientific data to determine what percent of testing is sufficient. The state recommends that robust testing and contact tracing be done before phase-one lifting of restrictions. Now, we have to keep in mind that the state did not close all transient lodging. We have not tested our most vulnerable population, like those in rest homes, those working in correctional facilities, and those working in a mill where an individual was tested positive for COVID nineteen. And that's the end of my report.
Commissioner Boyce, do you have any?
I think we might have a PowerPoint presentation from Economic Development Coordinator Madison. Is that true?
Um, later on the agenda.
That's later. That's for something later, sir.
Isn't that what we're talking about right now? Okay. Yes, I have a comment, Mr. Chair. Sorry if I misunderstood there. Where is that on the agenda?
D.
D?
Yeah.
Forgive me, okay, I missed that. The reason I'm wearing this mask is because what I've learned is that, good Lord, give me a tremendous immune system that may not last, and so the mask can help. And we're sitting closer together now, and I'm okay with that. It was kind of fifty-fifty, but I think it's okay. We still have our audience and the six-foot requirement. But things are improving. Things are changing. There's a lot of pessimism, a lot of concern out there. I've remained optimistic the entire time that we can overcome this. And as I told the Brookings City Council the other night, it's a fight that we have to win, and I think we'll come out of it very, very strong. I really appreciate the recognition of the median age of our county here is fifty-seven, depending on who you talk to, fifty-six or fifty-seven. And we've been talking about masks. We've been talking about testing continually and Curry County catching up, or in some ways even trying to, attempting to lead, and that's a good sign. But we really do have to concentrate on vulnerable, and that's, that's a tremendous responsibility on us all. Proud to announce my mom turned eighty-eight last Sunday, and we were able to celebrate for two or three hours, and it was just a wonderful time. Three kids, twelve grandkids, nineteen great-grandchildren. And it was just a really good reminder for all of her kids and grandkids and great-grandkids that called in. That responsibility and that recognition of fiercely protecting those folks. I do agree that back to the immune system Miss Bonifus mentioned. I believe we are all, at some point, if we haven't already been exposed, are going to be exposed, and that's how the system, I believe that's how our system works. We have to develop that immunity. In no way am I suggesting that we need to take unnecessary chances. And as we move forward here, we're watching very closely what the governor is going to recommend. The governor's program, the president's program seem to be relatively close, which makes it a bit easier to follow, and I'm thankful for that. So we voted to close down the lodging establishment, and then we voted to open them up as of Saturday or whatever the first is, excuse me. And at first, my, yes, Chair Pash, I'm winding down here a little bit, but I wanted to reach out to the public because I want them to know that my optimism is not, is not without really my heart behind that. I've seen how hard our people have worked here. I've seen how they planned, prepared, adjusted. I've seen the healthcare system take a tremendous hit, which is a incredible, I think, for all of us concern. And we're already making efforts, back to the optimism, to build that back so our people can be, and have opportunity for the best healthcare. At some point in time, best healthcare, and I believe that. Wise people are saying, slow and steady wins the race, and I agree with that. I'm not saying we acted prematurely on the first, that I want to buy some more time. May is a critical transition month. When I realize that our tour boats, that I did for thirty-whatever years because of the six-foot spacing or whatever masks are going to be required, the tremendous hit that could be for that company, that employer, that attraction that is so critical to our economic base, that is definitely going to keep me up at night, and is. So what I'm going to ask is for the board to reconsider this at least until we see what the governor has on Monday the fourth. I'm very proud to say and remind the public that our Economic Development Department through Summer Madison, and again, I apologize for getting the agenda out of order there, but working with the three cities, the administrators, I know all of the mayors very well. I'm very thankful to have a excellent working relationship with the three of them and even past mayors. And if they say we've got to wait, pretty hard for me to go against that. Very hard, because I respect them all. I think they're incredibly dedicated public servants, and they all have well-managed programs within those cities. So the six may not even be a possibility, even with the guidelines as Mr. Crook pointed out for the B and Bs and the motels and the tremendous input we've had. It may not be possible, but if we could work on the fourth to see, and our fingers are crossed, the governor gives us the program that gives us the momentum to go forward. We work, continue to work with the state, continue to work with the Coastal Caucus, all the other counties that are, that are working extremely hard to position their programs to benefit their citizens. We just need to go one day at a time. But it is my opinion, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Gold, that it's too early to open up now. Needless to say, we're going to be trying to find these businesses that have been hurt that haven't been able to qualify for the SBA loans. We are working through David Brock Smith and Senator Hurd twenty-four-seven to try and figure out how to get some, get them some help. This is not their fault. And to see people my age that are employing people and losing their businesses if they don't get open pretty soon, it's just brutal, and it's, it's very strong throughout the entire county. So very anxious for Summer Madison's report, the work she's done with the cities and vice versa. And I'll just conclude with really good days coming forward. If we can just get through May, we haven't had a new case in thirteen days now, and I think that's going to hold. And it's because our people have tried to do what we've asked them to do. They have stayed home, they have responded well, they've made the tough calls, decisions, and they expect, they expect same of us. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I think that was one of the governor's prerequisites, was having fourteen days with no active cases, and we're there. I, I just, couple of comments. I don't know when we became a nation of giving away money. I used to be, when we were, when I was a kid, if you're, if bad things happened to you, we were sorry, and it's just the way it is. Welfare was created for a group of people that was absolutely in dire need of things and had no way out. And it just seems as the years and decades have gone on, this nation just gives away more and more money, and I don't understand how we've gotten to the place that we are, but we are there. So I'm reading reports this morning from governors in other states saying that they're earning more money from unemployment. People in their states are earning more money from unemployment and government bailouts than they are if they had to go to work, so they're all saying, well, we shouldn't go to work because I can actually make more, make more money without getting out of bed in the morning than I can by going to work. I, I just don't know how we've gotten there. From a, from a stand of economics, it just doesn't make sense to me. And as a person that has spent his life in business and economics, I just don't understand how sensible people can think that the way that our economy is set up right now can succeed because it cannot. We cannot keep adding three, four, five trillion dollars to our national debt every time something happens, bailing out banks. I, I a hundred percent disagreed with that. Those businesses should have failed, and I'm getting way off target here now, but those businesses should have failed. We cannot keep putting the kind of debt into our nation and writing IOUs. So that's, that's one of my issues with getting our businesses reopened, because a lot of the people in this county have spent their life savings to open these businesses, to invest in these businesses, and to provide for the families that they employ in these businesses. Do I think that we should make a slow approach to this? Yes, I do. You know, from a county aspect, we only have a few motels, a few hotels, and we have a few county parks. Excuse me. few county parks. Excuse me. Our transient lodging footprint in the county is much smaller than if you took all the incorporated cities at once. We've already heard from mayors that they're not going to open for, I believe, about another thirty days. So that'll, that'll lessen the, the impact on the county as far as the footprint of tourism in the county. So to make a concise, um, smaller approach to open the county's motels that we have, that are in the incorp-, or in the, in the, uh, in the county itself, and to open the transient lodging areas in the county is, is a smaller step. Um, I spoke yesterday with some people, uh, management in the stores, food stores in the county. And they said, uh, immediately after COVID hit, within a few weeks, their suppliers dropped them down, some of them said into the twenty-five and thirty percent range of getting their groceries delivered into their stores. As of yesterday, um, they have been promised from suppliers that between sixty-three and sixty-seven percent of their normal weekly orders will now be delivered on time in stores, that the suppliers are starting to pick up, that we're starting to get, um, reimbursed with some of the shortages that we, uh, sustained early in this COVID, uh, crisis. I've also spoken with, um, some, uh, some people on the meat, because I've noticed, my wife has actually noticed some meat shortages, and they said that we will not face the meat shortages that, that they're having on the East Coast. Because from the Midwest, basically from the Mississippi out, there's a lot more farmland, there's a lot more fresh food, there's a lot more, um, growers of meat. Um, so they're, they're saying that we're not going to face the meat shortages, that things are starting to get back online. A lot of driving, or a lot of drivers have been actually off the roads, and they are now starting to get back on the roads. So, the stores aren't, the store people that I spoke to yesterday, uh, one was in Brookings and two were here locally, um, voiced their pleasure in, um, the, their, that their orders are going to be brought back up. And they say that this week they've been promised between sixty-three and sixty-seven percent of their orders, and they say that their, their suppliers are saying that will improve now weekly, um, getting them back up to a hundred percent. We currently have no active cases of COVID in, uh, Curry County. I believe the last one was, um, taken officially off the, off the board this morning, and that case actually tested negative five days later after it was ta-, uh, tested positive. And it was a, um, a, a case that, uh, it didn't, it was non-symptomatic. You know, we talk about our immune systems and how we have to get out and build our immune systems. When I was a kid, my well, if you took one, I, I was raised on a farm in upstate New York. You could take the cover off my well and look down and see the water. I mean, we literally, at times, I remember, had runoff into our wells. And my mom used to always say to us, "Oh, it'll just make you stronger. Don't worry about it." You know, when we were kids, immune systems, to get out and, and play in the dirt and get all whatever cut up, and you didn't, usually didn't even go to the hospital. Mom taped you up and you went back and, and played the eighth inning. Um, you know, my, my daughter is a PhD in San Francisco. Um, she was employed, uh, actually until just recently, because my granddaughter was born, at UCSF. And her PhD is in microbiology and exactly these kind of viruses and diseases. This is what she went to school for her entire life. So we can all believe the different doctors and everyone that we've listened and talked to. My daughter says, in her opinion, that much more is being made of this than is necessary. Yes, it is a, a, a serious illness. As we know, people are dying from it. As people are dying from the flu, as people are dying from heart disease. She is not going to comment on, on, um, people being lumped into different groups. I per- in the, in the United States have been maybe labeled as something like COVID that maybe, um, were asymptomatic for something else. But I have to listen also to the people that I trust and believe. And I trust my daughter and her opinions on this. And she said, "Dad, yes, um, you know, you live in a more aged community. Are, are the symptoms or the, are the percentages a little higher for your, uh, county than perhaps San Francisco?" "Yes." But this disease is a normal virus that will work its way out. They will probably find a vaccination for this within a year or so, um, and we just need to live through it smartly. So, you know, do I think we should open up everything in this county and let it go wild, just like it was, um, previously? Probably not. I think we need to make steps, and I think actually by the mayor, mayors of the ci-, uh, of the cities in the county making the decisions they've made makes my decision easier. Because it, it is going to limit the amount of tourism, because we get, we only have so many hotels and so many, uh, transient lodging spaces in the county. Do I think, as Commissioner Gold stated, that it should be, you know, possibly the CDC rules? We should have some guidelines to give hoteliers and to give, uh, you know, RV parks and those kind of things, uh, to make sure that they are complying with certain rules? I think yes, and, but that's something very simple to do. Um, but we need to get this county reopened. We need to start to begin the process of healing this county and, uh, bringing our jobs back so that our families in this county can provide for their kids, can provide for themselves, and can, uh, get the county back up on its feet. Those are my comments. So I would like to make a motion that at this time, we repeal Order 20842, closing the transient lodging effective May first, two thousand and twenty.
Are you going to put any contingencies on that with some sort of a plan for the motels to have a, a protocol for cleaning, et cetera?
Well, I think the CDC guidelines that were just read out, um, you know, actually, you know, and I, I will also say this. I was out of town the other day, and I was in a, in a, a medium population area, and I stayed in a hotel. And I asked the manager of the hotel that took care of me, uh, how they were doing. And he said that they were at about thirty-five percent. And their max that they were allowing was fifty percent occupancy. They were, they were renting up every other, up to every other room. Um, but they weren't at that, at that point. Their restaurant was closed, um, even for takeout, because there were many other restaurants around them, and they felt they would give that business to the local businesses around them. So, you know, I don't think we can police, um, our hotels. I think what the guideline, in my opinion, should be, is they should be given the CDC guidelines as to, you know, how they should, um, clean, proper cleaning procedures, those kind of things, and let them make their own decisions. Uh, I, I just don't want to over, I don't want people to think that it's our job to police them.
We, we don't have that capacity.
Right.
But one thing we could do is send that, um, thing that I gave to you about, Julie, I sent that to you about-
Yes.
The, the strategies for motels to be able to take care of it.
Yeah.
I don't know if you have a copy or-
Is this the one from Virginia?
Yes. If I can just add, Commissioner?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, yes, the example from Virginia does cite the CDC guidelines. So if you're, um, inclined to make a motion to open them May first contingent on the, provided they follow the CDC guidelines, um, just so the public knows, it talks about CDC guidance for non-healthcare facility environmental cleaning. It talks about routinely cleaning all frequently touched surfaces, and it explains how. It talks about the type of disinfectants to use. It talks about linens, talks about public restrooms, public spaces, lobbies, dining areas, conference rooms, et cetera. And talks about preventative actions for hotel workers and preventative actions to eliminate the spread of COVID-19. So, um, that is something, if the board was inclined to, we could include that in the order. Um, and it's up to the board, but-
I'll amend my motion then. Commissioner Boyce?
Excuse me, I, I'll wait till you amend your motion. Thank you.
I'm going to amend my motion to include the CDC, uh, disease, uh, control guidelines for COVID-19, um, to the, to the repeal order.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm going to just appeal to the board. Uh, we have a plan. Uh, we also have a very, very divided county. I've not heard, uh, the city administrators, the three, along with, uh, Economic Development Coordinator Madison's, uh, plan, waiting the arrival of the governor's, uh, uh, update on Monday. Um, and so if we could hear her plan and her proposal, if it is in fact in proposal form, I don't want to speak for her, but it, I, I'm very optimistic of the tremendous work that they've done. And I, I think, I, I differ with you on what's best for the citizens of the county. In this sense, Mr. Chair, when we're promoting, bringing people into this community, we need, in my opinion, we need to have a strong unified voice. So that's why I'm going to ask you to delay your amendment. I'm going to ask the board to delay their vote. Um, and, uh, it, we did, it, I don't know if we need another motion to amend the agenda so we can hear, uh, Ms. Madison's report as soon as possible.
Well, I think Ms. Madison's report is on, on something similar, but I'd like to go ahead and go forward with this motion. Um, and again, the motion has been amended to include the C, uh, the CDC guidelines.
Okay.
Commissioner Gold, would you like to delay?
I'm, I've got a motion on the floor.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
I'm going to second that with one comment. Uh, Lynn Bonifay said something that I thought was very important about opening slow, and by opening the county first, and then the cities come later, that would ensure that it would be slow. So, I'll second that.
Further discussion?
Board, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, that's what discussion is.
I'm just asking for one additional week to put together a plan that coordinates everything the efforts in the county and the city, uh, city, excuse me, are doing.
Noted.
And so, um, again, I'm going to appeal to the board that one week is, uh, I think the wisest thing we can do. Um, and, uh, we may even have governor's support. We may have Coastal Caucus support. We're still learning every day. Um, so, I'm going to ask the board one more time to delay their decision on this potential re- repeal order of 20842. Thank you.
Noted. Thank you.
Let me make one more comment about what Commissioner Boyce said. Um, I don't know that the governor is going to be talking about motels, because the governor was not involved in shutting down the, the county motels. But I think the week would give the motels a chance to get protocol in place before they open up, so.
So are you changing your second?
We haven't even voted yet.
Okay. I just want to understand.
Roll, please.
The, the, uh, the motion is effective May first.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold?
I'm going to say no in hopes that we can postpone it one week.
Vice Chair Boyce?
No.
Sheriff Pash?
Aye.
Motion does not carry one to two.
Set up first.
Yes, you can either make another motion right now, or we can just bring it back, um, on next Wednesday's agenda with the actual protocols in the act, in the document itself that you'll be signing.
I think it would be good enough just to, to bring it back with the protocols. So, that was my main concern, that we are doing this in a planned, organized way. So. I don't have the power, sorry. Right.
Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Further discussion? Roll.
Mr. Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Sheriff Pash?
No.
Motion carried two to one.
All right, next we have Curry County Strategic Plan. Financial stability. Actually, it's ten oh five right now. Let's go ahead and take a ten-minute recess. We'll reconvene at ten fifteen. Eighty-seven B requests to open Curry County as part of the state's proposed three-phase approach. Ms. Schmelzer?
Yes, so last week when we did the agenda, uh, the county had received information that rural counties in Oregon could petition the governor to reopen earlier if they could meet three criteria. One of which was to get a letter from the CEO of the local hospital explaining that they had enough, um, PP and E, and that they would report daily to the Oregon Health Authority on that, and that they had adequate and replenishable supply of PP, in addition to, um, a plan that, for, um, making sure they had enough hospital bed capacity and for surge protection. So, we put this on the agenda because we were going to move forward and actually petition the governor, um, to open up Curry County, because we are a rural county. But then this week, things changed again. So now they're talking more of a phased-in approach, uh, making sure you have certain things in order. Um, so we didn't, so I did not go forward with the petition. Like I said, that it changed. Um, just like yesterday, we heard that, or I should say, two days ago, we heard that the state parks were going to open, and now yesterday that changed again. So, no petition, no letter to the governor, um, so we'll just move on and take no action on this item.
Okay. Next we have commer-, uh, C, Curry County Employee COVID Hazard Pay. Commissioner Boyce?
I think we have a good plan here, Mr. Chair.
Your microphone, sir?
Oh, sorry, thank you. I think we have a good plan here. It says Curry County Employees, there's a Curry County Sheriff's, uh, staff. Um, where they just come in contact with, uh, a variety of things, a lot of it not even related to the, the present pandemic that we're dealing with. Um, but some of the counties around the state, and in fact, the entire country are saying, "Can we just give these people a couple extra dollars an hour to say, 'Thank you.'" Um, "This is, this is something we can compensate you for the added risk to you and your families even," uh, especially when they come into the, to the jail, um, and they're exposed to not the cleanest air. They have to monitor the people that they are incarcerating and properly take care of them, a lot of pressure on them, and, uh, just that exposure. So, uh, and I, and I think it's real important for the taxpayers to know that this is money that will get returned. Uh, the sheriff and his staff, uh, as do most of our departments, keep very good records related to added COVID expenses. And so we'll be able to get this money returned to our budget, to the sheriff's budget. And, uh, I was just really happy to be able to, uh, bring this before the board and would entertain a motion, Mr. Chair.
Well, if you want to make a motion, it would be your motion, sir.
So moved.
One of the questions I have in conversation about this, though, would be, it doesn't show an end date.
I think that should be left open. Uh, the sheriff's here, he might want to respond to that.
Good morning, Commissioner. Sheriff Ward, regarding this, um, this request, it was basically something that I overheard on a conversation we had with the OSSA and other sheriffs. Josephine County Sheriff Dave Daniel got his board to approve a two-dollar, uh, ra-, or above base pay for the people who were in direct contact with the public. And like I say, I sent that to the commissioner just for, um, just to get a, as an idea to think about. Um, I'm happy that Commissioner Boyce brought this forward with a, with a, I think it's either a resolution or an order, I don't know what you call it, but I do want to say that in the last twenty-nine days, we have been more busier than I've seen us in a long time. We've had, uh, six-hundred-and-ninety-nine calls for service in the last twenty-nine days. We've taken a hundred-and-seventeen cases. And these cases aren't just the run-of-the-mill cases. We've had some, uh, a lot of big cases. Uh, we're talking about a lot of burglaries. Uh, and I'll just read off some of the ones we've taken. I mean, we've, we've had a lot of drug cases, unlawful entry to motor vehicles, thefts in first degree, uh, unlawful, um, use of a motor vehicle, stolen vehicles, pursuits. Uh, we've dealt with several deceased subjects, the unattended deaths, um, identity thefts, male thefts, harassments, disturbances, shots fired. We've had two cases this year, this month, of shots fired and domestic violence. And, and one was, uh, an accidental shooting, but it was, uh, and recklessly. And, and one was an accidental shooting, but it was, and recklessly. Animal neglects, child abuse, and sexual abuses. We've had rescue operations. I'd say the list goes on and on and on. So my guys are out there dealing with the public directly. We cannot, cannot say we're not going to respond to calls. We're charged to public safety. We're 24/7, and we respond to every call that we can. So the direct contact that my guys during this COVID-19 is, has been substantial of dealing with people. We don't even know if they have it or not. Maybe they're asymptomatic, maybe they've been sick, but we still have to respond and we still have to take the calls. This, this order is said to be effective April 29th. I would suggest that, you know, we have been so busy this month dealing with it, even in our jails, dealing with the people who we take in, in conjunction with all the other sheriffs and jails, we were able to cut our population down during this COVID response to, from 35 max down to we had 10 people in custody. This last two weeks, we're back up to 20, 21. If we go any higher, we won't be able to do any quarantine on people that we bring in because when we bring somebody into custody, they go into a quarantine section so they don't surround anybody else for a certain amount of time before we can put them in any type of population. So my guys are continually around these, you know, the general public. So what I'm asking that if you approve this, that we retro it back to this, just this pay period, April 8th, I believe, since that was our highest peak of the time that we've spent around it. And I'm not saying we're doing everybody, my admin, we're not asking for that, just the guys that, the corrections, the parole probation, and patrol. About all I got.
Ms. Schmelzer?
I just have some comments on the order, and I understand it's a draft. You know, we can put it in our format for signatures and stuff. But I do have just a couple of questions. The Agenda Rounding Slip says it's for the sheriff's department, but the order itself doesn't specify that. I think if the board is going to approve this, this should make it clear what department it applies to, because otherwise, my concern is you're going to have several departments saying, well, I work with the public, or I do, you know, so I think it has to be a little more specific. And then I think, too, it should be up to, if it is just the sheriff's office, I think it should be up to the sheriff to determine which positions qualify for the pay.
Yeah, like I said, it'd be corrections, patrol, and parole probation. And the biggest difference that we do is we're hands-on. We have to take people into custody, we may have to fight with them or whatever, but we have direct contact with the public. We, we can't do our social distancing when it comes to times that we have to make an arrest.
Counsel Huddle? Microphone, sir.
So the only question I had, and I haven't had a chance to look at this yet, but sometimes there's a provision in a collective bargaining agreement that talks, I don't, I haven't had a chance to look at the CBA to see if there's a hazard pay section in there. Sometimes these type of contingencies are written into those agreements. I'd like the opportunity to look at that. I apologize, Commissioner Boyce, apologize, Sheriff. I haven't looked at that yet, but if we could maybe revisit this matter later today after I've had a chance to look at that, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. We can bring it back after executive session. Mr. Gold?
One other comment on your comment about having an end date. I'm thinking maybe we could say when Phase 3 comes in, opening.
Okay. I think we should leave the, it is a temporary order, and I think we should leave the end date ambiguous for right now and see what we learn in the just, you know, the next week would be, I think, helpful. But I appreciate Commissioner Gold bringing that up. So again, it is temporary, and if you want to postpone it a week, as the sheriff said, we could still consider going back retroactive, which would be helpful and give him some added direction there.
I'm not looking to postpone it. I think counsel said he could get to this pretty quickly, so we'll bring it back after executive session. If you don't feel comfortable at that time, counsel, then we'll postpone it until next week. If we can deal with it today, I'd like to get it off the, off the plate.
Can we leave the, the end time to a later determination?
Yes.
Thank you. Do you have agree with that, Commissioner Gold?
As long as we have something in there about an end date, because this is COVID-related, and, and I'm glad to hear that our expenses will be paid, so.
All right, so we'll readdress this after executive session. Moving on to D, Economic Industry and Small Business Recovery Updates. Ms. Madison?
Good morning, Commissioners. Summer Madison, Economic Development. Summer, can you just pull them like? Okay. So I've got to say, what we prepared to present today is nothing that we thought it would be last Friday, so. I think the advantage in the change in that is that things are really hopping and things are happening and decisions are being wavered back and forth and people are talking about things. So that's good. We have communication and transparency of expectations, which is making the work with the city administrators and managers a whole lot easier. I'm going to share with you guys, the governor expected to release the sector requirements for the phases in reopening by May 4th, the week of May 4th. And so we learned that late Friday, and it was good because then we were like, okay, great, we don't have to come up with these deliverables on our own. And that's what our intention was for Saturday's meeting with the city administrators. So. On how those impacted our businesses locally. And coincidentally, the governor sent out draft sector deliverables just yesterday. So this is good. Again, a shift from where we were going, but it's really good because it gives us more time to help these businesses be prepared. And I want to thank you for waiting the one week. I know it's difficult, but we want lodging and business owners to make sure that they have what they need to follow protocol so that nobody's catching any grief for that. Okay? All right, so I'm going to go here to the first slide here. So these are the five guidance documents that were drafted and sent out yesterday. The first is the General Guidance for the Public, General Employer Guidance, Sector Guidance for Restaurants, Sector Guidance for Retail, and Sector Guidance for Childcare. You'll see that there's, yes, sir?
I'm wondering if you can enlarge that into the slide program so that the public can more easily see it.
Yep. One more. Okay.
Wow.
Good enough?
Perfect.
Okay. I, I want to emphasize that there is no sector guidance for lodging, and so that, that needs to be worked on.
Is that because she didn't close lodging?
Yeah.
That's why they wouldn't have any guidance for it, because the governor didn't feel it was necessary to close. We did that on our own.
So what I've done is I've pulled the General Employer Guidance document to just give you kind of a quick idea of just that document and what will be required of our employers. Okay, let's see. Okay, so this is just a brief overview, but there are deliverables that align with the CDC and the recommendations that are coming down from them and public health. Let's see. We might be going backwards here. Okay. You'll see that there's deliverables for transit, retail, childcare, considering the modification of employee schedules, reducing unnecessary travel. The list goes on and on. I've submitted those, I think I sent them to you yesterday, and I've also published those on the county website, so they are there as a resource. And it goes on. Here's one that we are concerned in how will be implemented. It's the consideration of keeping a record of name, contact information, and date, time of visit for customers, visitors, for purposes of contract tracing if needed. Businesses should inform customers, visitors, for the reason of the information is being collected, and how the information will be used. So that's an added, an added responsibility on top of being prepared with PPE and exercising social distancing. Not sure how that one's going to roll out, but it's definitely something people are talking about. Limiting the essential work travel again, implementing safety and feasibility requirements, keeping the physical distance measures. So this one here is other barriers to block airborne particles and maintain distances. Review following. And follow any sector-specific guidance issued by the state that recommends or requires specific physical distancing measures. One of the concerns that I have in that for the business owners is that, I'm not sure who it was, I think maybe Chet Brewer shared in our management meeting earlier this week that we can't find Plexiglas. And I know that that's a material that's being used quite consistently with the entities that are open, and so my, my concern is being able to resource that material before the businesses are able to open and getting that installed. And then you'll see it goes on to talk about hand hygiene, hand washing, you know, making sure a hand sanitizer is available, which has been an issue to get a hold of as well. It goes into wearing gloves if you're in direct contact with folks, goes on and on. My other concern is I'm not sure, I know that we have the requirements for gating before Phase 1, which requires a letter from public health and the Curry Health Network stating that we have adequate PPE in case of sea of flux in cases. What I'm concerned we don't have is proper PPE for our businesses. And I feel we need to take some kind of measure to make sure that we're sourcing that bulk for them or maybe asking the chambers to take that up. I'm not sure, but I'm worried that that supply will fall short. There are some terms in here about health insurance and if an employee gets sick, how to process all of that, review and comply with federal law, state law. I think that's about it. There's some resources here. Again, you can access the links in the document on the Economic Development page, more links and resources, basically a ton of information. It might be overwhelming. And so the city administrators and myself have been working on best management practice documents and kind of condensing what the governor has ruled out so that it's simple and easy to disseminate and then move forward on. Let's see. City of Gold Beach started conducting a survey on, and I apologize, this is not a slideshow, but started a survey Sunday morning, and by yesterday, there was, sorry, yeah, the 28th, there was 384 responses. As of this morning, I believe it's 412 and counting. So people are definitely chiming in with how comfortable they feel with supplies available. We'll go ahead and make this available on the economic page as well, but you can see there's, I think, 15 questions, and there is some major support for a bunch of them. Basically, this one says, are you a member of the Vulnerable Individuals Group? The federal state guidelines define vulnerable individuals as elderly individuals and individuals with serious underlying health conditions, including high blood pressure, chronic lung disease, diabetes, obesity, asthma, and those individuals whose immune system is compromised such as by chemotherapy for cancer and other conditions. So what this does is supports the percentage of vulnerable residents that we have within the Gold Beach area that took the survey. So then it goes, what age bracket are you in? You can look at those responses. And he had the opportunity to review the state and reopening guidelines. So this is great. People are really paying attention, and I'm glad. So I think they're preparing, and they've had some time at home to do a lot of that. So this is promising. I think they're gearing up for getting things opened up. Okay. Do you feel safe starting the structured phase reopening process? Again, people are, you know, feeling pretty confident about that. And so I, I believe that the more transparent and communicative we are with them in sharing where we're making these progresses, I think the more confidence they will have in opening up. Personally, when do you feel we should begin reopening process locally? A big push for following state and federal protocol, so, and then yesterday means people are getting kind of anxious, so. Some good feedback here, you guys. There is more that you can check out. I don't want to take up too much time. We did have Jody Fritz worked on the draft lodging, best management practices. We've chosen not to share that right now because it's a draft, and so we want to make sure that it's thorough. And we're going to meet this afternoon and then again next week, make sure that we can have all that lined out so that we can propose and share that with you, and we'll send it in email before, when it's done. One of the concerns that I've seen come up is those that have received unemployment are doing pretty good. Act so good that when they are offered their hours back, even at a, you know, reduced level, they're, they're pretty comfortable with the money they're receiving from the state and feds. So this, this hinders our workforce. And so our restaurants are saying, yeah, you know, we, we're ready, get back in business. But the folks that were working for us, making minimum wage, are making more now and don't want to go back to work. And Politico has shared an article that, that really does reflect where, where we are at because, you know, our median income is, is pretty low as far as hospitality goes. And that's the demographic that is hardest hit. And so rural, hospitality, tourism-driven, you can see we're really going to feel that impact. I did reach out to Alex Campbell and Sean Stevens yesterday and said, hey, this is kind of what we're up against. Coincidentally, they had just sent out an unemployment update document, and the question that I had was not in there and answered. So they responded this morning and said, you know, that's a good question, kind of a tricky one, we don't have an answer for that, but we're going to push it up the chain. Because the other thing that we discussed with restaurant owners is when you do offer those hours back, how does unemployment know that? You know, the unemployment or the employee receiving the unemployment has certain levels and restrictions for reporting on a weekly basis, albeit they've been laxed a little bit because they know that nobody's really getting a whole lot of work right now. But there's got to be a means for the employer to report maybe on their social security number and say, this date, we offered full hours back, part hours back, and kind of create a culture of accountability for that. I haven't heard back on that yet, but I will let you know because it's critical. Yes, sir?
The employer will terminate the employee. That's how it's done in the businesses that I've been involved in. If you offer the person their job back after being laid off and they say they'd like to take more time to think about it, you terminate the employee and you notify unemployment at that time that they're no longer unemployed, they're terminated.
So I'm, yeah, I'll, I'll forward this document to you because you'll probably see where I'm feeling there could be. So anyways, okay. I'm feeling there could be, so anyways, okay. Lots of reasons and circumstances here in this document that I'll share with you why people wouldn't be required to go back to work, and I could foresee those being taken advantage of.
Imagine that. Commissioner Gold?
I just was going to say one thing. I know employers are able to get money by keeping their employees on, so if they were to fire them, I think they would lose that money.
Hence, why are we giving away money?
So, yeah, that's exactly the ramifications they're finding with the SBA payroll protection program. That's really what has kind of made this happen, or, you know, really influenced it taking off. And I'll forward that article to you so that you can read that. I think last week I had sent you kind of the overview and the simple text for the governor's phases, gating requirements. It was a PowerPoint that was maybe not as easy to read as it would be on a Word document. So, so with this document, it provided us, when I say us, it's myself and the city administrators and managers, provided us kind of a better idea of what we needed to prioritize and make sure that we were covering. It was exciting that we did get the draft sector deliverables earlier than the week of May 4th, which we were told was Friday, so that's kind of given us a head start. Let's see. Shared that, shared that. I do have a couple notes I do want to share. One of the concerns has been the supply chain, and I know that we had a comment earlier about that. We are working to make sure that corporate understands, for instance, McKay's of the five stores that they have, the one in Gold Beach is the busiest and the most profitable. So when the shelves are empty, that causes great concern and fear for folks in reopening. So we're working to make sure that there is a schedule for getting supplies in, and I understand that they're looking at 66% Commissioner?
Between 63 and 67%.
Okay. So this week, we will be able to monitor that and make sure that if they need support or some resource in making that happen, we can do that. Okay.
McKay's here as one of them, and he did tell me personally, he said that the citizens will see a marked improvement in shoving stock.
That's great. And I hope everybody understands they're doing the best they can. They really are. So just yesterday, we were having the conversation, well, last Wednesday, we had a legislative meeting with OPRD, Oregon Parks and Recreation Department, and they were set to reopen day use May 1st.
Day use?
Yes, day use, May 1st. And so we're like, great, let's see what we can do in the cities, this is kind of exciting, you know, get some people locally out of the house, that's a great segue to kind of start opening things back up. And then I got a call late last night, and they actually are looking at the second half of May. So, and they don't want that, but it's where things are at. I don't know the specifics, but I'm telling you that that's where it's at. So, a lot of back and forth on dates and things like that. And so I appreciate you guys being pliable and trying to stay on top of everything that's come. It's been a challenge, but I'm super grateful that we're all communicating and giving our best efforts. Commissioner Gold had asked that we collect some information yesterday, and Miranda did a great job making that a priority and granting all of the resource she could for Commissioner Gold. Commissioner, were you able to share that information earlier, or did you want us to share that later?
I didn't even get to my emails this morning. I was working until late last night trying to get my report together, so I had to come in tight.
Summer, that was shared with the commissioners?
Oh, okay.
Was it? Okay, so, do we need to put that in a summary report, or was it put in a summary report?
It was in a Word document. We felt that was the easiest format for you to disseminate in, so we're happy to put that in any format that works for you. I know Miranda's still getting feedback and receiving input, and she would be happy to add.
Yeah, I think it's really important that we get the facts before we make the decisions, so.
Yeah. So, that's kind of where we're at. We've got a meeting this afternoon at 4 o'clock. I don't have for you the businesses in Curry County that have received SBA loans. I wish I could tell you. I made it very clear that I need that information, and that's because we want to know who hasn't applied for help and what resources they need to be prepared for this next level of funding that's going to come through, and make sure that they at least put themselves out there as eligible. So, yeah, I'm gently pushing for all of this information because it helps us, but they're pretty limited with confidentiality.
Commissioner Gold?
I had heard that a lot of the bigger businesses were the ones that were getting the help, and all of our smaller businesses are getting next to nothing.
Yeah, I've heard that too. And I'm not sure if that information is coming out because those entities are saying, hey, we got our SBA loans, but I, as a region, as a team, regional team that has asked for that information at the state level, it's not been made available. So, I struggle because I don't know who's not getting the information, who's not prepared, who needs the support. You know, business owners and entrepreneurs are so amazingly talented because they have to be the marketer and the bookkeeper and, you know, the front face, the front line, the front desk, and so anything we can do to support them, you know, making sure that they're eligible would be helpful. We'll do that.
Thank you.
I would like to bring Janelle Howard, the city manager for Brookings, up if you don't mind. She's got a couple of comments. We'll make it real quick, Commissioner, and thank you for your time. Yes?
Can I just make one quick comment? I just want to thank you for reaching out to those transient lodging things in our community.
Well, thank you, but I'll say that was Miranda, and so I'm sure she'll be grateful that you're happy for the information.
Whoever it was, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
I have a quick question.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You just mentioned SBA, and I had a constituent contact me this morning and said there was several million dollars out there specific to Curry County. I'm going to do a follow-up on that. I didn't know perhaps you'd heard that, but it's a rather large figure, and if, to what extent we know, some of it's still available, and if there are businesses that need that help and are hearing this right now, get ahold of us, and we'll go from there.
So, I did get your email from last night to Alex Campbell about the funding that might be coming available, and we weren't sure if that was funding allocated specifically to Curry that is definitely coming, or if that's money that we're asking for, and how we might be able to apply that. I will tell you, there's been several calls of interest with creating our own revolving loan fund for small businesses in emergency situations, and what kind of funding can we execute some kind of program that will help us give something.
You haven't heard anything specific to money targeted SBA for Curry County, though?
No.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
No, I certainly would be a recipient of that information, not that I've seen, Commissioner.
Okay. Thank you. Either one, both.
Okay. First, I want to just thank Summer. She's been super proactive and been willing to meet with us. We met over the weekend, we've talked every day in addition to each of the other cities, and really want to get business open in our county, and waiting for the governor to give us that stamp of approval, so hoping that we can get there because the state of Oregon date is fluid, and we're hoping that we can get there before that date. I know that with those draft protocols that came out yesterday, we were looking at those specific businesses. There's restaurant, daycare, general retail, and then some government employer type, not government, but any employer type, protocols in place. In trying to get that out, I have employees distributing that to the relative, the relevant businesses today just to get any input we can back to the governor's office before 5:00 tonight, which doesn't give us a lot of time, but really just wanting to know practically how that works, and even at first glance, you know, the differences between our rural restaurants and the protocol. You can tell they're designed by people that are not in rural areas. So hopefully we can get a little bit of input and hopefully make it a little bit more flexible for a small restaurant that seats 40 people compared to one that sees several hundred. You know, like it just, it didn't quite make sense. But I was encouraged that she got the draft out yesterday because that gave me hope that that would really be maybe May 4th. You know, they said they'd be out the week of May 4th, and I was hoping for the beginning, so that's exciting. Really hoping that we're able to get our county open earlier. I know the five, I know they kind of ignored the five county request. Alex told us that he wouldn't be, that the governor wouldn't approve until the protocols were out, but I was hoping that the request would at least go to him so it was ready to say yes on the day she had those protocols in place. So I don't know where that's at now, but I'm still hopeful. And on the lodging, I'm hopeful that we're able to put together the protocol for that, and maybe as Commissioner Gold said, if we are looking at the occupancy, maybe we can, if they're only renting 15% now, can we open that up to 30, 50, 100 in some weekly phase or something that gives the comfort level to all citizens? I believe Summer just mentioned, and I heard this, I went and talked to every motel personally in RV Park yesterday, and they're concerned about getting their employees back. So if we had even the slightest phase and gave them warning, I think that would help them get their staffing back so that, because they don't think they're ready to handle it, which I was surprised, I have to admit, I was expecting more of a yes-go now, and I was surprised by what I was hearing. But they were ready to open and wanted to and wanted to do it slowly. So whether that was phased in by percentages, a cap, jurisdictions, I thought at one point maybe we could do the five cities, the five counties that we were kind of partnering with to ask the governor. I thought, well, can we just open to them? Because I don't know about here, but I think it's the same. I was told that pretty much 80% of the clientele are coming from the Rogue Valley, so that would help a lot. So, anything we can do to get that open, I would appreciate. We are meeting weekly, so I know that we, I know that the extension is 30 days, but I know that they're willing to look at it every week or any day in between if we have something that we can come together on, so please keep talking to us, and I would like to make that happen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know why employees are going to want to come back to work when they can sit at home, make as much money as they're making now and...
Some people like to work.
I'm not saying everyone, I'm saying most.
Can I just say something about?
Yes.
I just want to say something about the Small Business Assistance, SBA loans, Small Business Assistance Loans, Association Loans. And that is, SBA considers a small business 50,000 or less. So when people hear that the money is going to these larger companies, to us, yes, those are larger, but to the SBA, they are considering those small businesses. And, you know, I can't speak on behalf of SBA, of course, but if they have the money to put 50,000 people to work or five people to work, I think it helps put into perspective why Curry County is not getting the SBA loans that they're applying for.
All right. Moving on to E, public access to county offices and services. Ms. Schmelzer?
Okay, last week, we talked about the fact that we should, that I should meet with the managers. Is what we should do. So, we had, they're all functioning very well, you know, some are, a lot of them are doing it by appointment, some can do it electronically, but there are some off, they have, their permits, they want to get their plans reviewed, and we want them to do that, right? We've seen avoiding the, the lower level of the annex is ready to get going. They do have some precautions, you know, that they'd like in place, they'd like six feet apart, but they feel that they can put those measures in place and still open up for business as usual. But however, the assessor's office doesn't feel that we should open the annex building, and they have some valid concerns as well. So, you know, I was trying to think, is there a way to open the lower level of the annex but not the top, and how would that work? Can we close a fire door? You can't close the fire door. So, basically what this comes down to is everybody is able to continue providing service to the public. The lower level of the annex would like to open their doors to get people in. Open the lower level, keep the upper level locked to the public, but the lower level open, and then just have some signage on stairs just saying the stairwell is restricted to public use at this time until further notice. That way, we don't get people coming up to the upper level where those offices are not as ready for the public to come in yet. The other question that came up, or the other issue, was masks. So, you know, some people thought all employees should have masks, some people thought all customers should have masks on. We did have one report where the public was upset that the employees didn't have masks on, and so I discussed it with our public health administrator, and my advice is not to, not, the county should not dictate that employees have a mask or that the public have a mask on, rather it should be a recommendation, and if a department head wants to require their staff to have the mask or require the public to have it in that, options on the masks, you know. Some say that they can cause some harm, and maybe they're not doing as much good as they should. So I don't think the county should get in the position of requiring them.
I would like to say, though, if an employee...
And I think they, and you know, to be honest with you, I don't think any of our supervisors would, public being protected.
Counsel?
Thank you. And you did say that we would provide it.
So the way it is right now, when all of this started, we said that each department was responsible for getting their own masks, cleaning supplies, et cetera, and we announced that like a month ago. Some of them have not been able to get the supplies. The problem is, the county can't get large volumes of masks either. We do get masks through public health, and a lot of people think that means that we should be able to give them to employees, but the masks coming through public health are for public health purposes. They're for the providers and the healthcare workers. They're not for government workers or other businesses, people of that nature. So as, so in summary, about opening the county offices and services back up, you know, I, there's the issue with the annex, what we do, you know, do we open the whole thing? Do we just open? That we don't require the masks, but they are recommended. Just for clarification. Right, and we make it very clear it's a recommendation, not a mandate.
Right. We're not going to lock that fire door, we just put a cone in...
Would you want this? First?
Monday. Monday's usually a good day to start.
Okay.
Commissioner Boyce? Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we should revisit this every week because it just gives us an opportunity to adjust them in, especially if part of the annex is closed compared to another part. So, Jennifer, next week and just give her an update. Doing good with collecting the information from the different department heads, and I think we're, I think we're making a good decision today.
If I could just comment on that, Commissioner? I think maybe, I think, you know, it is time-consuming to get all the departments together and to have them talk every week on it, but maybe in phases? As the governor does the phases, maybe we can revisit it?
Absolutely.
Do you think that's, okay?
All right, so a motion. Roll, please.
Mr. Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
G to renew Steve Barland's contract, Commissioner Boyce? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hey, I just got a email here from IT that they're really caution, let me see if I can pull it up real quick, just give you a brief overview. Been a lot of buzz about Zoom security and the recent Zoom bombings where meetings are compromised and inappropriate content is introduced. There have also been rumors that the Zoom client is insecure, and give some information here. We have a meeting tomorrow, is, wait, is it tomorrow? Is, wait, is it tomorrow? Yeah, the 30th.
Uh, we have.
Has that been postponed or?
We have this afternoon and tomorrow, yes.
Well, there's part of a meeting with them this afternoon?
Um, we have Zoom interviews today.
Excuse me, not related to the other counties?
No.
Okay. So anyway, they're, they're recommending that we really look at Zoom as a potential.
We got that like a week ago, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't get it a week ago.
Yeah.
So we're still scheduling Zoom meetings?
Yes.
And you're okay with that?
Yes, sir.
It's pretty hard for me to go against, I mean, they can.
The meeting you were in yesterday was a Zoom meeting.
Yes, of course. I got this today. So do we want to, so we're going to carry on with our board meeting, excuse me, our meeting for the 30th at 1 o'clock, correct? And we're going to keep the Zoom program?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm opposed to that.
Giving back to G.
Yes, I am. I am, thank you. We seem to be in a real hurry today. I'm not sure if I understand why. So I just wonder if it would be appropriate to wait till after that meeting on Thursday to review Mr. Barland's contract. I do hesitate because the $500 that he is requesting for expenses is beyond reasonable, and I don't want him to double or triple the bill, which would be very, which would be justified. So I can go either way on this. Perhaps we can bring it up, Mr. Chair, on the 6th, and revisit it then, depending on what our meeting, how our meeting goes tomorrow. That's what I bring before the board right now for consideration. Thank you.
Well, you brought this in front of the board, so I'll ask you to, what would you prefer to do with this, sir? Because it's your agenda.
I mean, I, Mr. Barland has been very effective, he's been very patient. Do you have a comment or?
Yeah, I guess I, I don't think we need. Get money to pay the bill, because the contract is still good. But what happened is, we had allocated a certain amount of money, and there's only 100 and some dollars left out of that allocation. So I think what we need to do is, you know, we have this bill that he turned in.
Okay.
That we need to get paid. And then we do have $10,000 allocated in the next budget, so July 1st.
So kind of like a line of credit, we can just go?
Yeah, so I think the board, you know, I think it makes sense to approve paying the invoice that was submitted, which would basically mean that the board is approving an expenditure of about $350. Like I said, there's 147 left in the accounts, so to speak, of what the board previously allocated to Mr. Barland.
Give me one second here. Just wondering if I missed, it says here, my ARS does not say renew his contract, so there's a little confusion there. Maybe, I don't think. Anyway, so the agenda item list is renew Steve Barland's contract. Thank you for the clarification. I think that's pretty simple. I think we just need to get some funds in there so that he can draw with the expenses he's needed related to the work he's doing, again, with the Corps of Engineer and the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. Thank you. So that's, that's my motion, Mr. Chair.
Is, clarify it again, please?
That we, we need to put the funds back in to support the Steve Barland.
Invoice?
Contract.
The invoice that is brought before the board, is it what you're saying? Gold?
Commissioner, if I can just make a recommendation? I would recommend the board approve putting $1,000 into the account so we can pay this current bill and Mr. Barland's future invoice for the work that he's going to be doing before the next fiscal year starts.
Bet you would have liked to have had me include that in the ARS, huh?
Thank you. Further discussion?
We couldn't pay them because they weren't turned in. He wanted it to go to the board for discussion to see if they could be paid. So it amounts to $225.
And you say these were or weren't turned in?
From. And they were turned in on, in April, April 9th, so.
Okay, and our. Policy is 30 days, correct?
Um, the.
Uh, plane ticket to DC. Now, I don't know if the county has the money. You know, I didn't understand the policy, and although I should have, but it's a pretty meager amount. I've been contributing a lot back, and. To getting our, my wife worked very hard to get a good rate on that, and we could get our personal credit card receipt at some point in time, and that's what HR has been, and accounting has been waiting for. So we can approve it today, and I'll take that 700 and whatever dollars and. Put it into a fund for.
Commissioner, just, just to clarify, so the board didn't get a copy of the claim?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So let me just explain what it is. So the claim was for $509 for reimbursement for a flight to Washington. And that one, we did not bring to the board because that one, the board had previously approved. They had approved that you could go there, and so we knew that one would be reimbursed. They just need some more documentation from you. So the 509 will be reimbursed when they get the documentation, no question on that one.
Thank you.
The three that are questioned is, it's three separate charges for $75. Those are the ones that didn't meet the policy, and so those are the ones.
Excuse me, they met the policy, but they were outside the 30-day requirement, is that?
Correct. The expenditures were okay, it's just that they weren't submitted on time. So that's the part of the policy that they didn't meet, so.
It's up to the board, I don't want to spend any more time on this. I'd like to be reimbursed, but thank you, I.
My question is this, has, has the, has the bills for payment been finally given to, to SENA?
Yes. SENA was.
We actually have a copy of the, of the money that Commissioner is asking for reimbursement. Those invoices are in with SENA.
Yes.
$220 some odd dollars.
Yes. It's, like I said, it was three, three separate, one from October, one from November, one from December. And we know what those were for.
Mr. Gold?
When was that policy passed, the travel policy? I thought it was right when you pretty well came in, and.
I want to say about a year ago from right about now.
Okay, and who?
March.
Who made that motion? I'm just curious. Or do we even know?
Let me see if I have that.
On the new travel policy?
Mm-hmm. So March, 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 March 27th.
I believe that was Commissioner Boyce made that policy change.
Okay, so.
So why is that important? You don't want, you don't want to.
Well, no, I just think it's important that you were aware of it. And if commissioners can't follow the policy, we can't expect everybody else in the county to, so I'm opposed to it.
That's a real surprise.
I guess my point would be is, is. I mean, Commissioner, I'm sure you do realize the policy of getting our receipts in, and for, for one reason or another, you didn't get these receipts in on time. I would just ask you to be more prudent in, in getting those receipts turned in on time so that we can show the constituents of this county that we do follow the county policies. So I will second the motion to get this paid. Any further discussion? Roll, please.
Mr. Gold?
No.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Wait, can I vote?
No, you should abstain.
Yeah, I have to abstain, so we, we don't have action. I, but thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't think I can vote on that, so.
So then it's a, then it's a no because it's not a positive?
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Deslitt.
Okay, we are going to move on to our director's report.
Okay. I'm just going to go to the PowerPoint for a little bit, or I'm sorry to. This morning, it's not a slideshow, it's just some pictures I wanted to show you. So the first thing I wanted to talk to you about was, we were very fortunate. The Wild Rivers Community Foundation, they have a program called the Building Healthy Communities, reached out to us to see how they could help us with disasters, COVID-19, et cetera. And what they agreed to do was to fund a $28,000 mobile command center for us. So I just wanted to let you know that we are receiving a check for $28,000 to buy this, and so we're pretty happy about that. Just a real quick picture, what it looks like. So it's just, it goes behind a vehicle, folds up or down, goes on a trailer, you can take it up to fires, all different areas. So it has the computers in there, the screens, the, you can put your radios in there, everything you need to make that happen. So we will be doing a press release on that, just so everyone's aware of that. But I think this is just one more picture on it. Nope, forget that. Anyway, so very grateful to them for that. Michelle Carillo is the one who gave us that announcement, so we'll follow up with her on that, so. The other thing I wanted to talk about was the, as you know, I was working on a salary study. Actually, the former finance director in HR was working on it, and when she left, I picked it up. I think the timing on it is terrible right now with people out of work, but I did proceed and get the draft out to the department heads. I do need to schedule a workshop on that because there are some things the board has to discuss. One is, how many steps do we have in that salary study before longevity kicks in? What is the longevity percentage? And then what is the percentage between steps? Is it a 3% between steps? Is it 5%, et cetera? So that will be, we'll get a workshop scheduled on that, so the board can discuss that further. OpenGov, who is doing our finance software right now, reached out to us, and they have some stuff they offer their clients for free. One of them is a COVID-19 resource guide, so to just kind of show from government's perspective, what discounts you are, are available and things of that nature. For example, if a city is allowing you an extra 30 days to pay a utility bill, that's the type of information they put in this guide. So Summer Madison is going to be working with OpenGov on that free service that they're offering us. Then the big thing I wanted to talk to you about is Lobster Creek, and let me just see if I can. So I was out to Lobster Creek, and the Lobster Creek camp, for those of you who haven't been there in a long time, just to refresh her, is, it's a county campground, and it's where a lot of our 4H kids have went, they've all slept there. And about five years ago, we actually had a big fundraiser out there. We did a, kind of like a jail and bail, and I remember Commissioner Brown sitting up in a tree, and people would pay money to get her out of the tree, and it was just a good, fun event. And right now, we're looking at doing some training up there. As you know, we had a big fire up there last year. So we're looking at, you know, should we have some SAR, search and rescue, training out there? And then basically, how can we use that camp a little bit better? And so I went out there and looked at some things, and there's, I guess I bring this to your attention because there's a lot of money that we have to put into that campground. And I think as we sell properties this coming year, as you know, we can dedicate that proceeds to park maintenance, and I think we need to do some specific dedications to this park. So there's a couple of things, I'll just zip through these photos real quick, and I apologize, some of them are going to be sideways. Like I said, I just put it together like 15 minutes before the meeting kept started. You know, we have propane tanks ready to tip over. This is a little hard, this is actually the top of the propane tank, it's a sideways picture, but we don't have, you know, the caps aren't secured, everything's rotting away, people can access them. Building trim is missing, the bottom of the, this here isn't repaired. Major repairs on the buildings, major, still have a lot of mold issues out there, a lot of tripping hazards out there. This is a sideways picture, this is the roof on the A-frame, moss, the roofs haven't been maintained. We still have major drainage issues out there where the water's coming down into the main lodge itself. A lot of garbage, there's garbage cans without bottoms rolling around out there. This one, I have to, isn't of the disaster out there, but this is something. This is really an important picture, and I wish I had it correct for you, but. So what happened was, about five years ago, we actually had a big event out there. For those of you that remember Terry Mock, Terry Mock with, and David Miller, they did a lot of work on replanting the redwoods up the coast, and we planted a bunch of them out at Lobster Creek. They were just babies, they were like up to our, our knees. And so this is a picture, some of them, quite a few of them survived. This is one of them, so it was really cool to see in it. I think Terry unfortunately passed away this year, but he would have been really proud to see these trees out there. That was the good thing I found out there. This is a bad picture, but this is one of the cabins, completely rotted. The roof had layers and layers of plastic put on, never repaired, this is years old, paint is peeling, holes in the walls, garbage never cleaned up from the campsites. There's another one where a garbage can is full of recyclables that was never picked up. The cushions were left in the cabin, the mice got into them, chewed them up, gates are open, garbage, these are old chairs sitting alongside one of the sheds, oil can, I mean, ladders left out for people to use, knock over. Some liability concerns out there for me as well. Stairs not to coat, if you came out this door and turned to the right, you'd fall off, that's a good lawsuit right there, I think. Potential lawsuit, sorry. Debris laying around, tarp is covering it, resources, lumber, et cetera, that we purchased for repairs, rotting away on the ground. Picnic table's not maintained, holes in the walls, doors rotted. This is the cooler, the trim is off the cooler, and I guess my bigger concern is the cooler was left wide open. Somebody could go in there, get locked inside. Nothing's really organized or haphazard. This is the, the little bridge out there, the railing is rotted away. This is just wood laying around, rotted, wood thrown down by the shore. This is a bench, it's actually, there's another one, which is a little better picture, where you can see it's on some concrete, and it eroded around the concrete, so if you sit in there, it could fall over. This is the septic tank cover, this wooden thing here that you can step on. Then we have this brand-new trailer just sitting out there in the open, not put away. And then we're back to the original picture. Anyways, I, you know, I don't have an estimate on what it would take to get that camp up, but I do think that a good share of our proceeds this year from selling properties needs to be dedicated specifically to this park for the maintenance. And that is all I have for you.
All right, thank you. I don't have a lot of comment left to make. I think I've made a lot of comments already today about this virus and the issues that we're facing. I will say this, though, I do personally believe that the, this virus and the economic impact it will have on this nation, the 08 crash will dwarf what will happen this year with our economies. And the amount of business loss that is about to happen, that you'll start to see in the next two or three months. And it will be like the virus and just accelerate as the year goes on. I think by this time next year, we will all be looking back saying, wow, what happened to, to our economy? And of course, one person will be blamed for it. Those are my comments. Commissioner Boyce? I'll leave my comments at where they are, sir. You're up.
Give a shout out to Secretary of State. Yes, I brag that she's my first cousin, but I'm very proud of her. Quick paragraph here. "The U.S. Treasury Department lauded Oregon as a leader and an example for other states in its success of using data matching to identify improper payments in public assistance programs." "On April 14th, the U.S. Treasury hosted a virtual national conference about the services provided by the Treasury 'Do Not Pay Business Center,' known more generally as 'Do Not Pay.' The service helps to identify, prevent, and recover improper payments in federally." The service helps to identify, prevent, and recover improper payments in federally funded, state-administered programs." So I think that, I, I would think that the Secretary of State's probably headed towards the employment issue and there are some laws that need to be changed there at some point in time. And then I'll, thank you Director Schmelzer for sending out all the updates from the citizens. Um, yeah, I won't give a percentage, but a lot of very good public input. One of them you sent though says, "Do not open," and so I started to click on and go, oh, I don't think I better open this, but it was, "Do not open the."
The lodging.
Yeah. Um, I wanted to give a shout out for a group of volunteer citizens. Um, it's just been a tremendous inspiration. Uh, they are making masks. Um, I'm assuming at some point our masks are going to be required to, uh, employees from part of our service industry, but this right here, um, it says, "We the people." And, um, it's just, uh, they're donating all their time. There's almost 30 volunteers, as I understand. It's called Gotcha Covered. Um, and they're looking for more material. They're looking for sewing machines. Um, they're, uh, they know we have 23, 23,000 people, but to the extent that they might be required and it's just a good idea, uh, this group is, uh, really proactive and working hard and it's just a, great to see. So if we have any Duck fans out there, but this is my favorite mask, I'm saving it in case we get back to Civil War football this fall. I think masks are going to be part of our future. Uh, maybe not. Um, you see them in, I, I do see some of the supermarkets. The employees are, uh, making that sacrifice as well. I want to give a shout out to Roadmaster Christensen. He was in a impressive, uh, quoted in an impressive article, um, and the, the name of the magazine is, uh, oh gosh, I'm drawing a blank. I apologize. Um, anyway, it was, it was just last April 14th, "Protecting a River Road, South Bank Chetco Admits Shady and Cool Conditions. Curry County Saves Their River Road in Shady Cool Thanks to the Sections, Thanks to the Next Evolution in Chip and Fog Seal Treatments." And then here's a quote quickly by Mr., uh, Roadmaster Christensen at the onset, "This was set to be a particularly challenging project. However, after it was finished, the road engineering department confirmed it ended up being one of the best chip seals our department has ever had an opportunity to perform." Richard Christensen, Curry County, Oregon Roadmaster. The reason I bring it up is because the art, it was a rather large magazine and, uh, you know, it's just nice to see our people and the effectiveness that they have and to get the national attention there. I mentioned Zoom. Um, I just want the public to know, I'm, I'm very much in favor of this meeting tomorrow, but if the IT tells us that there's added risk to get into our system, um, I, I may just do my part and call in. I want to do a little more analysis and make sure that I'm reading this correctly, uh, but it is a concern I have. Um, went to the Brookings City Council meeting Monday night and, um, just the way they're managed, the way they're, they're conducting their business, the concerns they have, I've already said that, but, um, they, uh, they're wanting to work with us and they, they see, thus, uh, Administrator Howard, Howard was here today, they see, um, the, uh, the value in trying to unite our county in sending out one visitor promotion message. Um, the visitor promotion may not be the right category, but it is part of our hospitality industry and, um, I think today's meeting has been very good. One more thing, on the five-county, uh, approach to the governor for request of, uh, the, the three phases of opening up our, our county and connecting with Jackson Josephine Kuss and, uh, of course Douglas. At some point here, as we try and wrestle the state, uh, for the funds that need to come back to Curry County, as we're pretty, uh, pretty harried in any given day to try and collect and record those, uh, those expenses related to the coronavirus, uh, public health crisis. Um, we're looking at possibly having one of the larger counties, um, join as we did in the, uh, uh, the document that we signed last week, uh, representing the request to the governor. And even though she hasn't signed it yet, she, regional approach, she still might do that. Um, all the rural counties are aware that they're going to have to battle for those funds and there's just that huge concern that the state will put it into the wrong areas. I'm not predicting that, but there is legitimate concern there. Um, so the five-county process could be where one of the larger counties simply lobbies for. A combined effort, it might improve the odds that we'd have a better lobby and would certainly be helping our local state representative and state senators. So, uh, they would probably have, and I don't have a process. I'm not recommending this to the board. I'm just saying, is this potentially, if the other counties pick up on it, could it have been, could it possibly benefit us? They could take a reasonable amount out for their staff time and, and, um, it, I think the best thing would be all five counties in that, in this sense, would not have to send individual representatives to Salem. And so it's just an idea worth possibly looking at and I'll spend more time on that. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gold?
I'll make mine short and sweet. I've already said probably way too much today, but, um, I would just like to thank all of those who are suffering at this time and trying to do the right thing in opening up our county. I've been in several grocery stores and they're making every effort to. Be to avoid the virus and I think we're going to be able to open our businesses up with these safe practices. So that's all I have for today.
All right. Thank you. So at this time, we are going to enter into executive session per 1926602F to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. Nine, 1926602H to consult with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. And, uh, 1926602D, and I'm not sure, uh.
Labor negotiations.
Labor negotiations. So we are, we will recess at this time, enter an executive session, and when we come out of executive session, we will reconvene this meeting. This meeting is in recess. 20:00 PM. Um, we are back in session and staff is coming out of executive session. Staff is asked to proceed as directed from exec session. And with that, we have nothing further. This meeting is adjourned. All right, now we go back into. Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
I have none.
None? Okay, we've got one more waiting to enter in the room. All right, so with no, uh, no amendments to the agenda, have a motion, please?
My move is that we approve the agenda as written.
I'll second that. Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce? Absent. Commissioner Pash?
Chair Pash? Aye.
Motion carried two zero.
All right, so at this time, we're going to recess this meeting and go into a special executive session per 1926602H to consult with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be, that isn't right?
No, no, we're not doing litigation. This should be, um, information, this should be F, information exempt from disclosure or public records law and it's, um, to consider, contracting, uh, request for production.
That probably wouldn't have been set on the record, though, so. Could you hand counsel a microphone, please, Julie?
So we're in executive, we're going into exec session under 1926602 sub F, and that is to consider information exempt from disclosure or public records law and that is request for proposals prior to adoption by the board.
Okay, so we're in recess. One more time. All right, we are back in session from our special executive session, back into the special meeting and, uh, staff is to proceed as directed. With nothing further, it is 15:43. This meeting is adjourned.